Welcome to the September 11th, 2023 Wolfboro ZBA.
I'm sure most people remember this date and where they were. For me, I was at UNH just walking out of class. And there were this place called The Mub where you had like, kind of like food and all these activities going on. I walked up in there and there was people standing in front of a very big TV. At the time, I thought, you know, there must have been a big game or something last night. But as I turned around, it was like, I believe it was just after nine o'clock and the first tower just got hit. So I just thought it would be, the board thought it would be a great time to take an opportunity, take a moment of silence for all those that gave so much that day and that have given so much ever since then.
Thank you. So tonight, we have two cases. Our first case, Sarah, could you read in the first case and then report on the site visit, please?
Yes, Todd J. Palmer and Lynn M. Palmer, 57 Crooked Pond Road, tax map number 204-103, case number 06SE-23, public hearing for a special exception under Chapter 175, Section 55 dot 1B of the Wolfboro Planning and Zoning Ordinance to allow a special exception for building on a lot with no frontage, formal submission and public hearing. At 6:15, there was a site viewing, fortunately after the worst of the rain. Present were Suzanne Ryan, myself, Sarah Silk, Audrey Klein, Chuck. Luke was not there. Kate was not there. Sabette was not there. Randy Walker was there and Lynn and Todd Palmer Sr. were in attendance. Randy pointed out stakes in the ground, which showed the four corners of the garage. And also, there was clarification about a piece of property across the lane, Crooked Pond Road, where cars were parked, which was also part of their lot.
Thank you. I did forget to do roll call. So Audrey Klein, I'm the chairperson, Suzanne Ryan, vice chair, Sarah Silk, the clerk, Luke Freudenberg, member, Chuck Sumner, member, and alternate Kate McMahon. Sabette Strowman is not here this evening. Does anybody have any, do any of the board members have anything to say or announce before we hear the first case? Okay. Yes.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Randy Walker. I'm an attorney here in Wolfboro. I work for Walker &amp; Varney. I'm representing Todd and Lynn Palmer this evening, who are longtime Wolfboro residents. They own a home on Crooked Pond Lane, which they've, they built in 2005. And they'd like to build a garage on that property. And the only issue that they have is it is not on a town road. And they therefore need a special exception. And their goal was to build a 28 by 24, two-story garage, the second story being strictly storage space for residential purposes. They have 1.25 acres of land, so they have ample property. They meet all the setbacks that are required. There will be no changes to the site, except they literally will build a garage where it was marked by stake when you arrived. The lot is a grandfathered pre-existing lot. The property was subdivided back in 1964. There's a survey plan of the property, which you have in your packet, which also has been recorded at the Registry of Deeds almost 60 years ago. The Palmer's also have it deeded right-of-way from Center Street to their property. That deed is also in the file, just a document that they have deeded right-of-way. We have no objections from any of the neighbors. I will be submitting letters from all the neighbors, including Von Dugan, who's on the planning board, as well as the ledgers, whose property, the right-of-way goes over to get to this property. They are also in favor of the project, even though cars going back and forth may impact them. But anyway, I'll submit letters from all of them when I get to that point. So let me run through the criteria. So number one, site suitability. The property is in a residential zone. It's being used for residential purposes currently, and it will be used for residential purposes when the garage, if approved, is constructed thereon. And they've got ample space on-site for the garage, which is about 672 square feet. They've got over 60,000 roughly a square foot, maybe 50,000 square feet of total area. The road that services the property has been in existence for over 50 years. You drove on it. It serves not only this property, but I think three houses past it. Number two, immediate neighborhood impact. There should be none whatsoever. Again, the proposed use is residential in nature. It's consistent with other uses surrounding this property. The building will be used strictly to store their cars inside, where they're currently being stored outside in roughly the same area. And they'll have some personal property storage on the second story. So there'll be no change in usage. There'll be no change in trip generation, noise, vibration, dust, glare, heat, smoke, fumes, gas, odors, or inappropriate hours of operation, because this is not commercial in any way. There are no hours of operation. Number three, that there will be no undue nuisance nor serious hazards to either pedestrian or vehicular traffic. Again, the accessway is existing. It's been existing for over 50 years. There'll be no change to that right-of-way, nor change to their driveway access. The way that they get in and out of the property will be completely unchanged. So there should be no nuisance nor serious hazards to either pedestrian or vehicular traffic. And given how isolated it is, there's very little traffic to start with on that road. Number four, availability of public services. They only need one. That's electricity. It's already on-site. They don't propose any water or sewer to the building at all. Appropriative site plan, I mean, there'd be no changes to the site. There's already a house there. The driveway's already in place. And they'll just basically put a garage at the end of the existing driveway and put their cars inside rather than outside. All the setback requirements will be fully met. Number six, immediate neighborhood integrity. Again, the existing use is residential. The proposed use for the garage will also be residential, and that is consistent with all the neighboring properties in the area. And at least one of the other neighboring properties also has a garage. Number seven, impact on property values. We don't believe that the proposed garage will have any negative impact or decline in surrounding property values, generally placing personal property inside a structure rather than leaving it outside. It's a plus. A lot of subdivisions actually require that now, where you can't park vehicles outside. They want them inside. I do have letters, which I'll give to the board with your permission, Audrey, from all the neighbors.
Thank you, Randy. Would you give a copy to Livy, Livy also, please, in the white, the separate? Thank you.
Basically, this is just a standard letter that indicates that not only did the neighbors not object, they're actually in favor of the project, every single one. I had no objection, which is always nice in a small community like ours, when neighbors are supportive. And then last, is the proposed use consistent with the spirit of the ordinance and the master plan? We believe that it is. It's just an accessory use to an existing building that's already there. Again, consistent with other uses in this zone, consistent with the uses in the zone. And we believe consistent with the intent of the master plan. Should this board be favorably inclined to approve this application? The town planner had suggested four conditions. We have no objections on the planner review to any of those conditions if the board sees fit to, again, approve the application. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I have a couple. So I guess I'll start out. So there's, I'm assuming that they have to have some kind of state and town review for the shorefront setback, being it looks like it's 117 feet to the front of the house. From the, it's not really clear to me where the 50, 150, 250 line is. And I know that that's not something we do, but I assume that they go before a board for that?
No, they'll have to get the state shoreline permit, which they're aware of that. But they're well outside the 50 feet, you know, from, from the lake. Otherwise, the house itself would be problematic, and this is farther away than the, than the house.
And I noticed there weren't really any trees in that area that, that would be coming down, that would be within the shorefront, because it's pretty much cleared.
None at all. You could see where the four stakes, where there was no trees inside that area at all. There might be a few just outside, you know, to dig for a foundation, but.
And my only other question is, what, so the sideline setback is shown as 20 feet. Is that based on the length of the shorefront? Is the sideline setback based on the length, and is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I agree with Tavis.
That's all I had to ask. Yes.
Could you tell me the width of the driveway? It's in the deed, but I haven't had a chance to read the deed.
So the deed doesn't have any width for the driveway itself? The lane coming in, is that what you're referring to? I don't know the answer to that, but give me just a sec.
Randy, if you were to look at the deed, one, two, three, four, five paragraphs down, it says ears and assigns they were given a 40-foot right-of-way over parcel one.
And I agree with Sarah that that's what the deed says. And I suspect, although the road isn't that wide, that that's what was laid out. And I thought that the plan, also, the survey plan also might have had that defined. But I think that's accurate at 40, and, and the plan also shows it at 40.
The septic plan indicates that the actual road is 13 feet wide, but that's just hand drawn on there.
Yeah. Again, it's a grandfathered lot. That lane's been there for over 50 years, since 1964 and before.
Madam Chair, can I ask another question?
Yes.
Randy, if you look at the septic plan?
Yeah.
Top-left corner, where it says Crooked Pond Road, 13 feet. That's, that's the dirt-traveled way, but not the width of the right-of-way, correct?
Correct. Yeah. This was, the Palmer's did that, and I believe that's what they're indicating, that it's, the dirt part is, is 13 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Another question?
I don't, I don't have any other questions. I do have things I'd like to suggest as conditions.
Okay, I have a question. Has there been any thought about stormwater runoff from the roof of that garage?
So I presume that will get addressed when they come in for the, for the permit. As you drive into the garage, the roof obviously will slant to push the water uphill. And then it was all lawn, you know, there to capture all of that. And there's a good distance to the lake, like over 100 feet, I think, to get down to the lake. So it would just be that runoff coming off the roof, which is hitting the ground right now.
Could you do that roof thing again? Is it pitched roof, or is it just?
Pitch, pitch roof.
Okay.
Yeah. So you drive in, you saw where the four stakes were, literally, they'd drive right in. So you'd be looking at the peak, driving in. Yeah.
With the hand waving, I wasn't sure if it just angled in one direction. Thank you for that edification.
And this is the proposed layout, if you can see that, you know, just that peak like that. That's just a suggestion of what it's going to look like.
Chuck, do you have any questions? Kate, do you have any questions?
Um.
In your microphone, please.
We're talking about just a garage, right? We're not talking about any kind of dwelling unit or anything like that? This is just a garage?
Just a garage. We did indicate in the application that it'll be a two-car garage with residential storage space unfinished up above, and that's right in the application.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sarah, do you have any other questions?
I just had a comment. At the viewing, we were told that the house was put in in 2005. And in that file, it says that they got a certificate of occupancy in 2019. It's a pre-existing, non-conforming lot. And it's unknown exactly what percentage of increase was made from the old house to the new building. And then we're adding another building. And that was just kind of puzzling to me.
What, what boat house? Excuse me? Boat house?
No, no. The house that exists there now was a replacement for a previous house.
Yes.
And there does not appear to be anything in the file that showed that there was any special exception for changing the floor plan, the footprint of that building.
And you're saying it would have needed one because?
It appears as if it was bigger. The new one is bigger.
Right, but I don't think that the house itself, well, I guess, if it's in the shorefront, it might be considered non-conforming.
Well, it's non-conforming, because it doesn't have street frontage.
That would be the lot, not the house.
The lot.
Yeah, but the house itself, a house on a non-conforming lot, as long as it's within its building envelope, is not non-conforming. What would be non-conforming is a use as a residence. So it is a use as a residence. It's always been the use of a residence. So that's not non-conforming.
I was meaning the lot.
Yeah, the lot, the lot.
Non-conforming.
You know, I don't know if that's called non-conforming, because it doesn't have frontage. I don't suppose you could answer that question? Is a lot with no frontage a non-conforming lot when there's?
As, as of 1983, the statute would say yes, it is a non-conforming lot, because it doesn't have frontage.
Okay.
How, how the existing house was not required to get the special exception that brings us here tonight is beyond me, but not something we can revisit. How it can be there without a special exception is water under the bridge at this point.
Well, obviously, the original house was prior to the special exception requirement.
Correct, but I think Sarah's point is the exist, the current house is larger than the original. So it begs the question, should the special exception been required for the larger?
Well, that was actually 2005, when that was built.
Perhaps the CO is 2019.
I don't know, I don't know why that would be, but.
Red folder. The reason I brought it up is because under Special Exception 175, 55, 1, uh, 6, and 7, require that with the application, the acknowledgement for issuing a bill and permit on a private way is to be submitted to the zoning board with the application, not after the application.
Correct.
And seven, the acknowledgement agreement is also supposed to be included with the application. And.
Statement from the planning board and a statement from the public safety.
We have, I have nothing in my packet from the planning board on their review and their minutes or anything. Wait a minute, one more, one more. And then the driveway access site plan approval as appropriate by public safety shall be included with the application. I don't know if there was previously anything, so.
So I think part of the confusion here is because the application cited 175, 55 dot 1B, and the special exception on our memorandum is C. So when I read that, I assumed that if you met B, you also had to submit C.
No, if you read it closely, 175, wait a minute, 55.
1.
Wait a minute, 1.
Can I just?
The B might not apply, because it says, um, directed with no frontage or frontage only on a private way, not shown on a planning board-approved subdivision. So we go back to that early, proposed, recorded subdivision that unfortunately, that's how it was done back then. It shows with the deed and the plan, it shows the road, so B doesn't apply.
Okay, so it's only C that applies?
I believe it's, uh, let's see, wait a minute. It's C and, uh.
Mr. Attorney Walker, did, did you, did you handwrite the B in on your application? Or not?
I don't remember, but I do remember that either Terry Tavis suggested we put B in. I, my application as submitted was, was without it.
Your application was the entire Section 55.1. Didn't say A, B, or C.
Yeah.
Did you come?
Somebody penciled in B.
Yeah, here and here.
Who did that?
Well.
Yeah, I remember. I think, I think Terry put in the B. C is the criteria which the board uses to evaluate issuing the special exception.
And B is what?
Oh, all B says is prior to the issuance of a building permit, as an owner of a lot accepted at this section must obtain a special exception. Lots eligible for relief under the section shall be deemed ineligible for subdivision under lots' current configuration.
That's what I remember.
And then C is the actual special exception criteria. So the planning board did discuss this at their last meeting. They saw no problem with the garage in terms of lot coverage setbacks, height. And there was a concern raised about storm drainage, with the understanding that would be addressed under the shorefront permit. That's not in your packet, because I have yet to get the chair's signature on that page.
I think that, I think that it all applies except for B, because B says if it's not shown on a subdivision plan, which it is on the 1964. 64 plan, so B doesn't apply.
Well, 1964 plan wasn't signed by the planning board.
Well, but that's the way they did it then. It gave me hot burn when I saw this. I went, how the heck did this all happen? Today, it would never have happened. But the thing of it is, it's recorded at the Registry of Deeds. They didn't do like, you correct me if I'm wrong, Randy, but they didn't do like chairman signs the subdivision plan, and then it gets recorded. This got recorded at the registry for lots with that driveway on it.
So you're saying that they don't need a special exception to build?
No, they do.
That's my conclusion of what she's saying.
That's what I hear her saying.
And I must confess, if I could just jump in, the Palmer's were surprised that they had to come before this board in the first place. You know, they built a house in 2005, and they didn't get a special exception. They were given a building permit, certificate of occupancy, they came in. They were surprised just to get a garage, they needed to do it. And I read it sort of just the way Suzanne did. I said, well, they've got a 1964 plan. This lot's been around for 50, 60 years. But it wasn't technically, I couldn't find a planning board's signature on it. So therefore, by default, we drop down to C, I thought, because B just says you're exempt. If Suzanne's correct, then we don't need to be here at all, and we're happy to leave. But assuming that we do need to be here, I believe that we've complied. And if I could just address the three issues that you just, just raised. I asked Tavis about the review and comment from the planning board, because legitimately, that's something that has to be addressed. And you indicated that that has been done. We just don't have it, but that they did it. And as far as those two forms that you're looking to have signed, they were not submitted, but I thought in both your Axford subdivision, your Axford special exception you granted on a house last year, and the other one you did for a house last year on South Main Street, you just made it as a condition of approval, those two. So since that's how this board handled it on the last two applications for this same exact situation, where the roads weren't frontage. But to just go down that road, I don't really think that we should have to sign the acknowledgement regarding issuing a building permit on a private way, because they already have a house. Why could they waive the liability? They've already got a house. We might waive it as to the garage, but we don't want to waive it as to the house.
No, no, I'm not going down that rabbit hole. No, I'm, I'm saying to you that portions of this does apply. And it's, it's appropriate, because it brings, you're putting in a new building, and it brings the liability issue up for the town and brings it up to today's standard. It just so happens in, it wasn't until 1996 that the town adopts subdivision regulations. So we're stuck with this 1964 version. And now is the proper time for this board and this town to get the two documents. If this is approved, it should be a condition of approval, that those documents be filed with this property, so that the town doesn't have any more liability than they probably do right now.
That would be fair than they do right now. We would have no objection to that. In the second one, they have no plans to subdivide the property anyway. So that, that's a no-brainer for number seven.
Now, I think Randy did the right thing by having them come in, because that plan from 1964 says proposed subdivision. And as you pointed out, Suzanne, there's nothing that ever was signed on the plan that showed that it was ever approved. So I think you erred on the side of caution and did the right thing.
This is the time to bring.
Depends on how this works out, doesn't it?
Bring everything.
So what you're saying is to bring it current as a condition of approval, assuming it gets approved, that before a building permit is issued, we would need the planning board's statement, the public safety's statement, the signed waiver of liability, and the signed, the statement saying that they would not sub, that they know they can't subdivide.
And that'd be conditions precedent to?
To a building permit.
Yes.
Okay.
So could I just weigh in on, on one, number five? The driveway access, they already have a house with a pre-existing driveway. It's already been approved. So that's why we didn't submit yet another one. They've already have a building.
Right.
Certificate of occupancy already. But number five was already taken care of.
So I think, I guess what I would say in a general sense, as, let's just say there were lots further down the road. As each one comes in for a special exception to get approved, the, the risk becomes higher and higher, because there's more and more people down there. Therefore, the driveway needs to be evaluated each time, in my opinion. I don't have a lot of heartbreak, because this is a garage. It's not adding another dwelling unit where there are people. So I'm not all that concerned here. But I think the process should be, because times change, equipment changes. The equipment's a lot bigger than it used to be. You know, 15 years ago, when they evaluated the driveway for getting a little fire truck down it. They'll never get the ladder truck down, not that they should have to. But I just think that times change, equipment's changed, and that step should be taken every time a, certainly a dwelling unit is added to the road. That's my take on that.
I think totally legitimate, if it's a brand-new home like it was on Axford Way and the one on South Main Street that you approved, without, neither one had frontage. On those two, and those are both dwellings. This is just a garage, and again, if it was a house, I agree, that'd be more problematic.
So would you be, would you be?
Why would you argue just having those forms on file for the town's protection? Why would you argue against it? It seems a very sensible thing, at least from our perspective, to protect the town. And it also is, I can't understand. And it also is, I can't understand why you would argue against that.
So a very fair question. As a taxpayer and voter, we absolutely should have those forms executed in each and every case. I think this case, however, since I'm wearing the Palmer's hat and representing the Palmer's, that because they already have a house, they already have rights to have the police try to come or the ambulance or fire trucks try to come in right now. So I don't think they should be penalized by adding a garage. As to the garage, if the garage's on fire, you don't send a fire truck. I agree, that, that would be their problem. But as to their house, I don't think because they have certain rights that they have to give those up, which that form can be tailored to, I think, say, as applicable to the garage.
That doesn't, that doesn't penalize them. It, it's a form that gives recognition to the fact of what they've got there and they acknowledge that they're not protected by police and fire. Right now, they maybe think they are, but they're not. It's not a classification road. It's not even a class six road. So by putting this in, by putting this in is, it's in the best interest of the town and that's who I work for. I know who you work for, but I work for the town and this board works for the town. And it's not a hardship to have those forms put in. Conditions precedent.
Suzanne, I guess, I guess there's two different forms that we're talking about.
There are two different forms.
One of them is just acknowledgement stating that they understand the risks of the road. The other one, the fire department could actually say, you know, we've decided that we don't think that that's safe and we're not going to send the letter because we're not going to approve this. That's the, that's the.
What number?
Difficulty five. This is why.
Number, number six.
Somebody representing the client might not want to have, to go down this road with that.
Well, I think we've got to do six and seven. If you don't want to do five, I can go along with that, but six and seven, most definitely the six is the private way.
Well, and six and seven aren't conditions. That's a requirement of the special exception.
Yeah, it's a requirement of the special exception. So I don't know what they're arguing. If they want to get an approved special exception, they've got to do that because it's part of.
Correct.
It's part of the regulation.
I mean, it says shall in each one of them. There's no, there's no waiver in that.
Just as the deed of right of access.
It's part of the regulation anyway, so we're not going to, at least one member here, I'm not waiving the regulation.
Fully understand.
And, and I know the planning board did talk about it, but I didn't hear the whole thing and we don't have the actual comments by them, but that's a, that's a comment. It's not a, you know, a yes or a no from the planning board. So that could be.
Did you open the public hearing? I don't think so. I don't think so.
Want me to start over?
I did invite him to come stand up and talk. So I'm, I'm opening the public hearing.
And maybe the public wants to speak.
I'm not, I'm not done yet, though. Because this, I was going to wait for later, but because this is part of what I was talking about, about my feeling about increased development over time and, and how the road may not suffice, you know, down the road and so that every dwelling should have this reviewed, I would like to, I would like a condition that says that a second dwelling unit would not be made on this property, either detached or attached, such as an ADU as part of the conditions.
No objection to that.
And the second floor of the, the garage will remain unfinished storage.
Yep.
Okay, that would be, that would really make it clear that there's no more hazard.
Yep.
Except for the garage is pretty close to the house, but I mean, so are trees. So that was the only thing that I had a concern about. Any other comments from the board right now? Any other comments before we hear from the vast audience?
For the moment, no.
We have a number of letters that are in favor of this application from neighbors. They appear to be pretty much all the same. And there's one to six of them. So we'll just put those into the record.
Attached.
Attached to the record. I'll just read one of them. Dear Chairman and other zoning board of adjustment members, I slash we are in favor of the Todd J. Palmer, Sr. and Lynn M. Palmer's application for a special exception which would permit them to construct a garage at their residence at 57 Crooked Pond Lane in Wolfborough, New Hampshire. And each one is signed by another person on that road. Anybody in favor like to speak? Anybody opposed like to speak? Any other comments from the board before we close the public hearing? Have a motion?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, do we want to deliberate? We need to talk about findings of, findings of fact?
That's after you make the.
After we make.
After we make the decision.
After we make the decision?
To support that decision.
So I would just like to say that I, those two conditions, in addition to the ones we talked about.
All right, well, hold on to those. Hold on to those because 175.55.1 is important that we include some of this stuff because as I read it again, relevant to six, seven, and five, it says, the owners of any lot exempt under this section must obtain a special exception prior to the issuance of a building permit for the lot. Applicant for special exception under this section may be approved by the zoning board of adjustments only if all of the following requirements and conditions are met. So we were actually, actually very much within our purview to require these. And that's why I would hope that when the motion gets to approve, that these conditions be spelled out.
So let's, so we know that, one, we know that the planning board did review this. We, we don't have the comment yet. Number two, the lot, as far as I can tell, does apply to, with all the other zoning requirements. One of the issues I'd like to just give us a heads up for next time is to take a look at the size of the lot because it must comply with the current zoning in order to comply with all the other zoning requirements. And I think we've missed that before. But this one happens to be to meet the minimum lot size as it is. So we don't, I don't think we need to worry about that. We have to go through 175, 127A through H?
Well, let's do it right now or keep it in order.
Okay. Wait, let me just get to the right pages.
Site suitability. Adequate usable space, adequate access, absence of environmental constraints, floodplains, steep slopes, et cetera. What's the board's feeling?
The proposal seems to meet it. The, it's a, it's a nice level spot. There are no slopes to be concerned about. All the setbacks are adequate. There is adequate usable space around the building, good access from the driveway. I think it meets all the intents.
The access gives me hot burn. However, with the applicant signing these documents, that will ensure the town is protected.
Madam Chair.
There's.
Sarah's got it.
That's Sarah.
I looked at those and I feel that we have addressed them. As for G, impact on property values, we don't have any testimony from a real estate agent, but we have no testimony saying that there would be any decline either.
We're, we're going to get there, but we have to go through them one at a time? Okay. I just want to say that there is adequate usable space. There's snow storage. There's room to turn around. I mean, it's not, it's not tight that way. The only, the only thing that isn't completely normal is the access through the Crooked Pond Lane, which is what we're here talking about. Two.
B. Oh, maybe my sheet's in a different order than yours.
Oh, we've got the one, two, A, B thing again?
Yeah.
Okay, I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
I'm just using the backside of the memorandum.
I'm using their application.
That's the ordinance.
Okay. But this is the form that they get to fill out. Tavas, could you straighten that out? The one's numbered and one is lettered. The ordinance is lettered and the application is numbered.
Okay.
It seems to catch us each time.
It is tricky.
It's very tricky. B, immediate neighborhood impact. There's just no impact that isn't regular in a residential neighborhood, as far as I can tell.
N, A.
N, A? Okay. Public services are available.
C, you skipped C.
Oh, yeah, look at that.
The little one.
Undue nuisance, serious hazard to pedestrian or vehicle traffic, including location and design of accessways. It's well off of Crooked Pond Lane Road, so it's not in anybody else's way at all. Everybody agree?
Yeah, that's how they get into their parking area now.
Yeah. D, availability of public services and facilities. If I remember correctly, they only, they have their own sewer and water. The stormwater, they don't. The water falling off the roof is shedding down the lawn, so there's no drainage, controlled drainage issue, according to the attorney. Fire protection, please. We spoke about no additional dwelling units with regard to fire protection and hazard level.
Well, they don't have fire protection, but they're signing that waiver form.
Well, fire.
They got their own, they got their own pond to put out their fires right in the backyard.
And buckets, right. No addition of more dwelling units. So there's less fire hazard.
What'd you say about fire hazard?
Fire hazards. Fire protection, there's, there's not an increase in risk because there's not going to be additional dwelling units. So the fire department doesn't have any more risk getting down there than they already have.
Well, again, they're, they're signing that acknowledgement form regarding, regarding the.
Sure.
Private way.
You know, that's not going to stop the fire department from trying to go down there.
Well, certainly won't.
No. Site plan, parking scheme. They've given us an adequate site plan that shows the setbacks and the turnaround area and the size of the buildings. If you all could think about findings of fact as we're going through this so that we can kind of use some of these as facts when we need to get there.
Audrey.
Yes.
Can you say something about the fire protection again?
So.
I listened to what Suzanne said earlier about the waiver. Does that mean if a house is on fire and you call the fire department, nobody comes?
It says that they, they may not be able to come.
They may not be able to because of the access to the.
That's right.
Okay, all right, okay.
They'll always go.
So they'll always try.
But not necessarily will they get there.
And what we said here was that there would be no increase in the risk because.
Well, there's no increase in the life safety risk because there's no additional dwellings, but you know, their, their garage could burn down. Was that good enough?
Yes, thank you.
Immediate neighborhood integrity, historical uses and established use patterns. I think this, this is exactly what's happening down on that road.
Yeah.
Impact on property values. It will not decrease any property values on that street, as far as I can tell. We don't have anything, like Sarah says, that says it will or it won't.
Right. H.
Would you like to answer this one? The spirit of the intent of the master plan?
The proposed use of the structure is consistent with the spirit of Part One and the intent of the master plan. Well, no, I wouldn't like to answer that one because I don't know if I agree with it.
I, I can't speak to it because I'm not sure how to hook it into the master plan.
Well, it, it's consistent with.
The master plan calls for a variety of housing options.
Well, it's interesting what the master plan talks about, about properties around the lake, too. So I don't know. I, 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 this is a stretch, but.
So wouldn't, I mean, wouldn't that just mean that the master plan talks about the impact of lake construction, but the regulations of lake construction are the binding or driving or guiding factors of that? And if things meet the regulations of shorefront construction, then they also meet the master plan?
Well, I would agree with the way you said that and I'd add something to it because you helped me think through it, which is the master plan is something to aspire to. The ordinance is something we must live by. So I would put little emphasis on the master plan and great emphasis on the ordinance and it meets the ordinance, the spirit and intent of the ordinance.
Good job. That was H.
So then, you need a motion.
I do.
I'm going to, quite honestly, I was not in favor of approving this, but that's why we hold these hearings and we debate and ponder and listen. And so with the information that I've heard tonight, I am going to make a motion to approve the special exception under 175.55.1, tax map 204103 at 57 Crooked Pond Lane for Mr. and Mrs. Palmer. It's a shorefront residential district and it will be to construct a, where is it? Construct a, where is it?
Twenty-eight by twenty-four.
Are you got it right?
Is that what you're looking for?
Construct a 28 by 24 two-story garage as an accessory used to an existing residence. The second story will remain, will be an unfinished storage space.
And before we go and make a motion on that.
That was a motion.
I'd like to make some conditions to that motion.
So that was the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
And the, huh?
I'll second.
No, 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 we're going to do the conditions.
You want to do your conditions first, okay?
And the conditions would be under 175.55.1.
B, C, yes.
C. That all of the conditions ought to be met and that's.
Prior to a building permit.
Prior to a building permit. And that items five, six, and seven will be precedent to, or are we going to do all of them precedent to?
All, all of them precedent to.
Okay, so the, the conditions of approval attached to the previous motion will be conditions precedent 175.55.1C, one through.
One, four, five, six, and seven, because we did two and three.
One, four, five, six, and seven.
One, four, five, six, and seven. And then I would like to add eight and nine. Eight, conditioned property will not be approved for a second dwelling unit such as an attached or detached accessory dwelling unit. And nine, second floor of garage will remain unfinished storage.
And.
As applied for.
Am I assuming that when you're adding these conditions, you are also including conditions 1 through 4 on the planner's review?
Yeah, the town, the town planner's boilerplate conditions, 1 through 4.
Okay.
Now we can have a second.
I'll second it.
Sarah, seconds.
Roll call for a vote. Luke?
Yes.
Yes?
The town planner put his hand up just...
Want to do findings before you vote?
What'd he say?
Do we all do findings before we vote? We can do it either way.
No, no, the findings support this motion.
I hope.
They support the vote?
Yeah.
So we can do them after?
Yeah, we do the findings after. That's what supports the motion.
Yes.
Ryan, yes?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
That's right, you don't.
An alternate is not sitting.
She will in a minute. Okay, so it passed. You have, we're gonna do findings of fact, but there's a 30-day appeal period, as you know. Give you time to collect the precedent conditions. Okay. We can be pretty, pretty straightforward with the findings of fact, right?
Right. The, the facts that support the motion.
I think that, given the conditions that we've attached, that the site suitability, the adequate access is met.
Yes, that's a good one.
We could also say that...
There's no detrimental impact.
Well, given that it's a residential structure in a residential neighborhood, the impact is not...
It's minimal.
There's no, no detrimental impact that's different than, than is already there. That kind of covers a lot of these.
Yeah.
No detrimental impact.
Should we put something in there about the site was previously developed? And that we do have a site plan drawing that supports the layout and the lack of any impact from...
The, the site plan indicates compliance with all other zoning requirements?
Yeah.
Can I just ask a clarification of something? Because we have two drawings here, and one was the plan for the subdivision, and the one that shows all the details is actually the site plan for the septic system. That's the one that's giving us the details we're looking at.
Well, it's called site plan. Lot loading calculations.
Yeah, it's not a survey, but it is a site plan.
Right, it's dated 2005. Perhaps we can include that to differentiate it from the 1964 drawing, perhaps?
Good point. So the site plan, um... I don't know if we have the whole thing because I don't see on here who did it.
Yeah, there's no engineer's name on it, but they must have used this for when they built the house.
It was under construction, so they located, this is probably a, a foundation location plan of some kind.
A lot loading calculations is for the septic plan. That's what it is.
But the house was already under construction per this note here.
Right.
So it's a, it's a, a septic system plan that was received August 16, 2023.
Correct. Mark 2005.
It's a septic system site plan received August 16, 2023. Is that enough? That's about the best way to identify it. So it's a sep...
You know, and I think I messed up. I think I should have also included in that motion the size of the garage.
We did.
I did?
It's in the...
Right, I gave you my, my information packet, and you read it off of there.
Okay, I think that's enough for findings of fact, there's three.
It's pretty straightforward.
First, for the next section about availability of public services and facilities and all that, you know, those are all pre-existing, so we really didn't need to address those.
We answered all those already, yeah.
Okay, we good?
Yeah.
All right. I, I believe the board needs to review some paperwork, and I think we should do that in public session, but we won't be talking. Do we have the paperwork we need for the next case? We don't have it. Tavis, do we have any notification paperwork for the next case?
What, what, what?
Let's, uh, let's close the public, we already closed the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
What, there is no public hearing open?
I thought we did.
You did, a long time ago.
But I'm not gonna open the next case yet because we have some administration things to discuss.
I don't know if we want to open it.
Let's discuss some administration things with, without opening the case.
Yeah.
So I can attest that the project that you're thinking about was duly noticed in the paper, and all abutter notices were mailed certified.
So does that include the...
All-abutters, property owner, et cetera.
Was, was mailed certified?
Yes.
So you have...
I don't have it right here, but I know for a fact they were all mailed certified.
So nowadays, do, do, do the certified letters require a signature when they're picked up?
No.
Or are they just...
No.
And so I know that was a fairly recent change to what's acceptable by the state law. Do you know where that section is that we can review the language in that?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay.
But it's, it's, you're required to notice abutters by certified mail, not certified return receipt.
Correct. And then, so does a certified mail have those little slips?
Yes. So...
I've got it here. I've got your file folder here.
Well, for example...
Yeah, but they're not in there.
And you have, you have to understand, in the middle of this season, and this is a horrible excuse, but that's what it is. This is what comes back.
That's right.
So every time...
That's proof that somebody took it down to the post office and gave it to the postmaster.
And it was mailed, yes.
Right.
What I don't have is this little group for the case you're referring to.
You don't have the packet of those?
I don't have this little packet, but we had a couple of people out with various ailments, et cetera, that could be sitting in the front office, because all the mail comes back to one person.
Madam Chair, can I just ask a clarification of something? So essentially, those little receipts verify that they were mailed, but it's not return receipt, so we cannot verify whether something was received by the person to whom it was mailed.
Correct. The statute doesn't require proof of service, it requires proof of mailing.
Okay, thank you.
Didn't need to ask that.
Okay. Does the notification include the property owner in this case because it's an appeal?
Yes.
I know you said the abutters were all notified, the property owners, too. Okay.
Absolutely, and I can read off the list of everyone that received the abutters list if you'd like.
Okay. Thank you.
So, um, is the board comfortable that the, um, the person who received the building permit that's under appeal has received notification for this hearing tonight? Another question for you, I guess, Tavis. When the appeal was submitted, was, was the person notified that the appeal had been submitted in a letter or some other...
It, it only comes through the abutter notification. There is no process to say, hey, we, the town, just received an appeal of something affecting your property. Here's a heads up, you'll be receiving an abutters notification.
So what was the date the appeal was received, and when were the notifications sent out?
It's on here.
Uh, 8/23/23 is when the application was stamped in. It started being received on 8/20.
August 23rd.
Well, 8/23 is, well, it is, that's when it was finally completed.
Oh, you mean the, the...
The application form was originally signed 8/20, but it was missing some information.
8/23/23 was the, appeal was accepted at the office.
Correct. And all of the letters were mailed on or before September 1st to stay within the five-day timeframe.
So to stay within the notification of the hearing timeframe? So is there a timeframe that notification has to be sent after the appeal was accepted?
No, the hearing is what's getting noticed. That's the purpose of the abutter notification. So the appropriate notice for the hearing has to be within the papers at least five days prior to the hearing, and the abutters is the same. Does not include the day of posting in the paper or the day of the meeting with the case of the paper, and we send out everything early enough.
When was the date that the building permit was approved and sent to the person that had applied for it?
I would have to look in the file in front of Suzanne to see when the building permit was approved. To answer the question you're going to, the, the expiration date was the 21st of the appeal, the 30 days, the 30-day appeal period.
The 21st of what? So the building permit was approved, what date?
Let me rephrase. The appeal was received within 30 days of the building permit being... Right here, 7/26.
Well, there's more than one, I think.
7/26/23 was the date of... Yeah.
Okay, 7/26/23, and the appeal was turned in and accepted on 8/23, and then the notices were mailed before 9/1, I think you said.
There's more than one building permit.
They both have the same date.
Yeah, both the same.
Yep.
Yeah.
So 30, 30 days from July 26/23 was August 25/23, so the appeal was received prior to the expiration of the appeal period.
Right. So I guess the board needs to have a discussion about whether this case was properly noticed, and if so, whether we hear the case with the applicant here, but without the person who received the building permit, or whether we do something else, which I don't actually know what that would be. But we could, we could potentially open it and continue it. We could choose to renotice it with, with return receipts required. I think that'd be going way out of our way, but I think that...
For, for a staff opinion, unless someone could stand up and demonstrate that abutters notices weren't noticed, I think the board can accept that they were duly sent.
Well, that's what, that's what the law says.
Right, with regard to the owner of the property, i.e. building permit issuie here, that's irrelevant because it's between Mr. Brown and the board at this point. That's staff opinion.
Well, it is. We, the board did not get to have the site visit that we would have liked, but we can, we can talk about that while we deliberate.
Was the board unable to see the site?
We, we didn't, um, we didn't get a good...
In your microphone, please.
We didn't get a good site visit. We didn't get, have an opportunity to see the garage, first floor, to enter the building. We were not greeted as usual when an application involves a property. They usually point out different aspects to us, and then we were told that the person involved didn't receive notice. So I don't feel we can hold a public hearing because we didn't see what is physically going on, other than the perimeter of the site. And what, what's involved in this application is literally what is the use going on in there, and we don't know.
No, I think the appeal is a lot size question, not the use. And I'm not surprised that you weren't allowed into buildings. And I just remind the board, the ordinance doesn't require a site visit for an appeal of administrative decision. That's something the board has taken on its own.
I would just like to, to insert the fact, as clerk, I took notes at the, at the site viewing, and the person that claimed that he did not get noticed gave his post office box exactly as it is listed on the abutter list.
Well, I, I don't think we should continue this discussion any further. I am uncomfortable having this discussion, given that we were unsuccessful...
Oh, I'm sorry. I have to recuse myself.
Well, I didn't have, I thought of that, but I didn't have a problem with you asking for...
Procedural.
Procedural steps.
Right, but I think we might be segueing into...
After that, after that, yeah.
I'm going to sit in the audience.
Okay.
Well, if you decide to open the hearing, I gotta come back and get some stuff.
So can I ask you a question, Suzanne? If you don't feel comfortable because you feel that perhaps a key player was not notified, exactly how is it, do you think we can ensure that that person is notified if we were to hear it or continue it?
It isn't just about that party's notification, it's about the fact that we couldn't do a proper site visit. We could only visit around the property and the area and the bounds, but beyond that, we don't know, we don't know how to make a determination on what's going on within the building.
I don't know if that's part of the appeal.
I can't, can you come down here?
I don't know if that's part of your appeal.
Can you come down here, you're muffled. Can you come down here, please?
No.
He's, he's saying that he doesn't know if that's part of the appeal.
He's saying what?
If he does, he doesn't know if that is actually part of the appeal process.
What, the site plan?
No.
The site visit?
What's going on inside the building?
Well, of, of course it is, because, because they're asking for a duplex on the property. How do we know what's, what's being proposed within the property to make it a duplex?
They were issued a permit for a duplex, and somebody appealed, saying they didn't have the appropriate lot size, so I don't know how the inside plays in...
You know, you know, Tavis, you're gonna, you're, with all due respect, you're gonna argue this to your benefit because the building permits were issued on this property, and the party was allowed to continue on without the proper approvals. And so my suggestion is we not open the public hearing. We contact our counsel on this. This is a very unusual situation where a potential violation is against a person that doesn't want to cooperate, and I don't know, I don't know, and I really, and, and again, I'm not being disrespectful, but you're not a lawyer, and I think a lawyer needs to address this. I've never come up to something like this where somebody hasn't wanted to cooperate.
The only reason I bring it up is the ordinance doesn't say you have to have a site visit to do this. So that's why I'm suggesting you ask, ask your counsel. So that's why I'm suggesting you ask, ask your counsel if that's what you feel is appropriate. But a site visit is not a requisite in the ordinance to act on an appeal.
I feel that this board, if we could get that part straightened out, we have jurisdiction over this. It's an, it's an appeal of an administrative decision. That's not unusual, but the way it's come about is unusual, so I, Tavis, you know, I can hear you, but you're muffled.
So one of the options I would offer is that you could instruct staff to renotice the hearing for the next, for the October meeting, and give the board time to address counsel in the interim, if that's something the board wants to do.
What?
I, I mean, I can't ask the questions that I want to because we can't, we're not gonna open the case. So I'm trying to be very careful what I say.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I don't want to open it. I don't want to get into it. I just...
So in that period, in that, in that period of time, between now and then, hypothetically, if the board decides to not open this case tonight and not go through it, things continue upon the project?
It's not, it's not continuing. What I'm suggesting is the board could renotice for the October hearing.
There should be...
What I would suggest is that someone get ahold of the DA Council ASAP to find out what happens if you extend that deadline.
There should be a stop order on that project.
I don't think you can do that. That's what, that's what I'm asking. I'm saying, I'm saying more about the project, because, one, if we say we're not gonna hold the meeting, okay, right now, the owner of that property has a building permit that's been issued by the town of Wolfboro that's in full effect.
No, this, when, when somebody places an appeal, that freezes that. They can't, they can't do anything else. They're frozen. They can't. Once, once this appeal has been placed, it's, it's like, it stops. They can't do anything. They're, they're stopped. I forget the term. There's a term.
Regardless of whether someone's doing something or not doing something, still, it puts, it puts the, it puts this case off another month, okay, when I think...
It doesn't have to be a month. You can set it...
Okay, two weeks.
We have a meeting, I believe, scheduled for the twenty-fifth of September, which was supposed to be a work session, but we could certainly do that. But, but I understand, I'm not sure if I'm on the same side as what you're saying, but I understand what you're saying is that it puts off construction for two more weeks, and I understand what Suzanne is saying, that once you have...
There's a stay. I just thought of the word. No, wait, I just wanted to tell you the word while I thought of it. It puts a stay. They can't, while the appeal is pending, it puts a stay. That's the word I wanted. They can't, they can't move forward. They can't move forward.
It's not a public hearing. You can't speak. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. It's not staying. Continue non-stop. I am gonna say it. I am the person who put in the appeal. It's not stopped. It's been at a breakneck pace ever since the appeal day. That is why this is being done tonight.
Yeah.
That is why this is happening tonight. Give him this deadline every week.
Now, we, we've got a procedural mess to figure out here first. We understand. We've got your, we've got your paperwork. We've got your paperwork. We've all read it. We understand the situation, but we've got a legal question that we have to do correctly, otherwise we'll all be in trouble.
Correct? It has not stopped.
We don't, we don't, we don't get the choice to do that. The stay is by the planning department. Your beef is with the planning department, not us.
Okay.
And the town manager. So, what, what's, I need some help here. Do you want to just not open this and, and hold a meeting in two weeks?
Can you start the meeting, or do you think it may not be...
Close to the microphone, Kate. It's not open.
Not open at all? Okay.
I can't hear you, Kate.
I wouldn't open it. Do you want to renotice for the twenty-fifth?
I got two not open.
I'm gonna ask the question, because if, if that person had been noticed, and they said they had been noticed today, would that change, if that one person had received that notice, would you be okay opening the hearing tonight?
I got testimony from the fellow at the site plan that he had not received notice, and that he checks his mail every day, and he never got any notice. He knew nothing about this meeting, and I said to him, well, thank you, I'll have to take your word for it. And he said, what do you think? I'm lying? I said, no, I'm just taking your word for it. So to me, it doesn't, it, it, he said he didn't get it. I have to take his word for it. He didn't get it. We have nothing here tonight to prove whether he did or he didn't.
But there may be somebody else out there, too, that may have not gotten the notice, didn't happen to see you at the site, at the site visit, and is not here either. I mean, that, that's, in the course of events that lead to all these, all these hearings, there's all these, these, all these notices sent out to all these abutters, and, you know, people may or may not check their mail, or, you know, it may even have inadvertently got lost, but I, I just, obviously, there's, there's people here that are, that are citizens that are on both sides of this issue, so if, if it was, if it's, if it's just over the, the, the person saying they didn't get it, when it was mailed, according to the town planner, then I'm okay with opening it because it's not gonna change anything. I, I don't, it's, for me, it's not gonna change anything. We need to hear this case, and, but I'm fine with doing it two weeks, but I feel like if it was, if there was more to it than just that, if it wasn't noticed properly in the paper or something else, then I'd be more okay with it. But if, if that's the board's, if that's the board's decision, you know, I'm not gonna go against it, of course.
Okay, there's more than the one issue about the notice. The second part is, we didn't get a proper site visit by the party that owns the property that has the complaint against it. So there's two issues there. Sarah.
Okay. I'm, I'm not sure I agree with that part, because one of the things we were supposed to address was the lot size requirement, and that's pretty cut and dried if, if it's...
We're not, Sarah, we're not gonna talk... Sarah, we're not gonna talk about any particulars on the application.
No, you're gonna let me finish speaking because I have the floor. We have some information here that makes it very cut and dried as to whether it does or does not qualify for...
Sarah, you're out of order. Please do not talk about the specifics of the application.
We're talking...
I'm only asking questions about whether to hear the case tonight or not.
I'm, I'm into hearing it tonight. I'm sorry, I can't agree with, with, I mean, it's unfortunate about the notice, but I think we have enough information here that we could move forward to the two items that were specifically listed on this application.
I'm gonna make a motion that we do not hold the hearing tonight, that we do not open the hearing tonight. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, vote. Yep, and that would be we hold it in two weeks.
Did you need to appoint an alternate?
Thank you, Chuck.
By the way.
I do. Kate, would you weigh in on this with your vote and sit as a voting member tonight?
I would. I'm still thinking about how I feel about the meeting. I haven't decided.
I'm sorry. Yes, I haven't decided on the, on what your suggestion is, yes or no.
You gotta make up your mind.
Has everybody else voted?
Hmm?
Who is, am I the last person to vote?
No.
Oh, you want to go, want to go around to the others?
Yes.
All right, give you a minute.
Okay, you made a motion already, so it was seconded, so I am in favor of hearing the meeting tonight.
I am in favor of hearing the meeting tonight.
I am not in favor of hearing the meeting tonight. We didn't do a proper site visit. And, and it is required for a special exception for three members to do a site visit.
This is not a special exception.
Oh, this isn't a special exception, right. Sorry.
Right. I'm not in favor of it, hearing it tonight, because Luke said that there's people, citizens here on both sides of the issue. In reality, I don't think, I think everybody here is on one side of the issue, and that's why I'm uncomfortable hearing it tonight. There's only one side represented here.
So now, Kate, you're the deciding vote, to hear it tonight or not to hear it tonight?
I'm in favor of holding the meeting.
Opening it. Okay, so it's three, four to one.
Three, two.
What?
Three, two.
Three, who else voted? Oh, you're staying with you, no? Not open?
I'm with you.
You're with me?
Yeah.
It's three, two. Three to open, two not to open. The majority has it.
I want the case material.
What do you need to do?
My material.
Oh, okay. So...
Now, having said that, you could continue it to renotice. You want to poke it?
Thank you.
So I had a question. I had a question that may, that may allow you to do that, but I have a question, I guess, to Tavis, and, obviously, the, the petitioner here would probably be willing to wait two weeks or not be upset about waiting two weeks if they were assured that in that two-week timeframe, that work would actually stop. Is that, I'm asking Tavis, is that, what is the procedure when an appeal comes through?
That's a discussion we'll have with the town attorney.
Okay.
What'd he say?
Does the, does the, does the zoning board have the ability to stop work?
Let me carry it further. The fact that a permit's already been issued, regardless of the zoning board decision, may impact what the town does or does not do.
I couldn't understand the last part of that.
Whether the zoning board upholds the appeal or not will not be determinative in and of itself on what the town does with regard to the building permit.
I thought when appeal was pending, that that is a stop.
That's the normal course of action, yes.
So by opening this meeting and continuing it, this appeal is still standing, and there should be no work done on that property.
It depends on what work you're speaking to.
Well, I mean, regarding making it a duplex.
Correct.
Give me a minute. All right, we have a motion to open the meeting, so what we could do is open it and continue it in two weeks, two weeks from today.
I think what that would do is that would allow the, the people that are here, that have come here and sat here for...
I know. I'm sympathetic to...
That would allow them to present their case before us, and then if there, we could leave the public hearing open hypothetically, that would also allow the people or persons that have not received, that did not receive the, the notice to come in two weeks and present their information as well.
Okay. I agree with Luke. Okay. Everybody understand that the, the work for duplex would stop while this appeal is pending, and that I'm going to, my thought is, I'm gonna open it and continue it, which will keep that appeal pending and stop the duplex work until we, in two weeks, come back and make a decision either that they can continue or not. Does that make sense? Is that where you're going?
Uh, whatever, and we can get legal counsel in, in the midst of that, too.
Okay.
We could consult, so...
All right. Madam Clerk, will you read the site visit as it was, notice, the notes that you took?
Case number zero-seven AAD dash twenty-three, requested appeal of issued building permit number two-oh-two-three-zero-zero-zero-four-six-eight, tax map two-one-seven-dash-zero-one-three, property address sixteen Libby Street, filing date August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. Applicant Derek L. Brown, thirty Libby Street, Wolfboro, New Hampshire. We had a site viewing at approximately six-thirty tonight. People present were Suzanne Ryan, myself, Audrey Klein, Chuck. Luke was not there. Sabette was not there. Kate arrived. We also had Richard Frazier from the church, Dennis Hart, Derek Brown, and Regina Brown. It was explained that there was a right-of-way through the, this was explained by Richard Frazier from the church, that there is a right-of-way through the parking lot, which appears to be just adjacent to the edge of the church. There is no parking spot to park, but it is a right-of-way through the parking lot to get to access to where the building is taking place. There was, Mr. Hart displayed the retaining wall and explained about drainage, this small stone in the driveway, and this is just adjacent to this lot, and cobblestones by the street to help with drainage. There was a, a, a few of us walked over in back of the Hart house. You could see where the ground is very spongy with water. I myself walked through there, and you sunk down into the grassy area. We were told it started getting wet in nineteen eighty-five. The next unit uphill, which is unit number twenty-four, I believe is getting wet. That was a testimony we received. We went around to the front of the building, and the, the owner of sixteen Libby Street, Robert Beckwith, said he had not received notice. He hadn't signed for anything. He doesn't get the newspapers. He hadn't seen anything in the paper. When the vice chair asked if he'd seen any notifications, he verified that his post office box was as listed on the abutters list. We also, a couple of us viewed number thirty, which is the abode of the person filing the applicant, and got a feel for where that particular house was located.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, now, I'll, I'll open the public hearing for testimony, and I don't expect that we, the board, will get into our deliberations portion of this. Tonight, we'll just take your input, and then we'll take that under advisement and decide where to go from there. So, Mr., what is it, Brown? Would you care to testify first?
Thank you.
My name is Derek Brown. My wife Regina, we live at thirty Libby Street.
Excuse me, could you, could you just pull that microphone up a little? Because they also have to hear it for the TV. Thank you.
How's that? All right, thank you. Thank you to the board for being patient with this. It's, it's been a challenge as a landowner here. I appreciate, Tavis, you speaking up on the issue. I'll start with a quick description. I honestly don't care what's inside that building. The reason for this appeal has to do with outside the four walls of that building. Okay? That is the sole reason for this. We have watched the water problems become big problems for our lot, being the lowest one in the area. It never used to be that way, in terms of the lowest lot, but due to poor building practices and poor execution by the town officials, that has evolved and has become a problem for us. And this problem has been coming on, and it has been talked about and documented for almost two decades. Okay? So my discussions have been heard for several months to the planning department, the planning board, of my concerns for water and what's going to be done. We have several of the abutters here tonight... We have several of the abutters here tonight, the Harts that live right next door to the property, Mr. Frazier representing the church board, and their abutting of it. And I haven't met a happy abutter that I've been told exists during the planning meetings, the planning board meetings. Everyone's pretty upset, okay? Because this has not been handled, in our opinions, and in this case, I'll say, I'll take the hit on that. In my opinion, this has been handled about as poorly as you could. As a licensed contractor in the state of Massachusetts, I know I'm not in New Hampshire, this is a fascinating process. Okay? So, the planning director, taken from the town website, oversees enforcement of town zoning ordinances, building codes, and related regulations. There are ordinances in place, there are procedures in place, that a homeowner taking on a project are supposed to be made aware of if they're not already. Planning department is to assist them in doing so. So I don't want to truly bore you with reading all this. I encourage you to read it outside of here. Okay? But what has happened, and I'm going to use this summer's exercise as the point of why this is a problem. A meeting took place, and you saw my appeal letter, hopefully everybody did. On June 20th, I was at a planning board meeting. Now, keep in mind, our primary residence where we work is in Billericay, Massachusetts. So I'm 100 miles from here, and I'm up here at the blink of an eye. I'm making a lot of trips, okay? To support this process. So on June 20th, there was a meeting where, prior to that meeting, by two weeks, I presented written documentation, stacks of photographs with location services turns on, with about two decades' worth of evolution. The planning board and its members did not even provide the courtesy of reviewing it. So I brought copies, because I kind of suspected that might happen with everybody's busy schedules. So we handed them out at the planning meeting. It was reviewed. Enough recognition took place that, wow, there could be a water problem here, as we've been discussing. So it was agreed that evening, and it's in the minutes, you can see it, you can read it, that a site visit would be recommended. One of the members spoke up specifically. Tavis said that could be done, and provided a schedule for that, of July 11th. He was asked to notify in writing the abutters, and he was told it was not necessary, or he told us it was not necessary because everybody was here. So that didn't happen. Well, I was here, and I was actually quite excited about the July 11th meeting, but we're finally going to get people to come and see this problem. July 10th came. The meeting was canceled. I found out the morning of July 11th, because I'm ready to leave work for the afternoon to come up to prepare. No reason as to why it was canceled. It was canceled. So I made the reckless assumption, my fault, it's going to be bumped two weeks from now. Okay, great. Well, I'll be back in front of everybody to find out what's happening. So two weeks came. Find out, I call, is it on the agenda? I don't see it on the website. To find out, it's no longer necessary. That's what I'm told. Why is it not necessary? I asked. Well, the building permit has been changed from an ADU to a duplex, so it's a zoning issue. Well, I'd be dishonest if I didn't say I was pretty upset, because we put a lot of energy into trying to understand how this process can help correct the damage on our property, or prevent it from getting further. So I went, I didn't know what the process was. I honestly, this is the first zoning meeting I've ever been at. And what I found out was, I went to the planning department, I requested the permits, the plans. Now, keep in mind, at the various meetings between the spring and the summer of the planning meetings, Mr. Beckwith was repeatedly asked for a drainage plan, for a parking plan. They have not been presented.
I'm sorry, a drainage plan, and what was the second thing I didn't get to?
A parking plan.
Oh, parking. Thank you. Sorry.
For this backyard that you walked through this evening? Sorry. Okay? So these things were not presented. When I went to the planning department to receive, okay, let me look at the whole file that's available publicly. There was nothing there. There was a building permit, sure, and there was a drawing, line drawing of the building itself. Okay, this is all we have. Okay. What's an appeal? How do I do this? So when I'm looking at the permits, I find out the day after the 20th of June planning meeting, meaning June 21st, the permit was changed to a duplex from an ADU. Coincidence? Maybe. Tavis, at that very meeting on June 20th, said the challenges of the ADU that the planning board was trying to get Mr. Beckwith to employ, he was bucking them repeatedly. So Tavis made the suggestion, he should just do a duplex, it's easier. So apparently, he took that advice. Nobody was notified. It just became a zoning board issue. So I'm watching this get kicked down the road further. So I'm here to say no more. Because what I'm seeing is, we're not, in these departments necessarily enforcing the ordinances and procedures that are in place already. I mean, you're talking about a seasoned, experienced contractor, Mr. Beckwith, his brother lives below me, the next lot down, they know the building codes. So there's no reason they should not know what a drainage plan requirement should be. Okay? So, from the articles, from your articles. Article 175-89, a duplex is requiring .5 acres. The actual lot size is .2. And again, I'm not here to say, I honestly care less about that building. I could not care any less about the building itself. I don't see it. But what I do care is that property that this, that this planning board and planning department was told in June, we haven't changed much in this property in years. We park a boat out there. I provided you a photograph that you have, unfortunately, I've got the luxury of color. But this one here, from the same position, you can see, that picture on the top is from June, and it is substantially different since then. All that impervious grass soil is gone. It is all gravel, that entire backyard. So not only do you have the displacement of rainwater from the building, the building I'm still saying I don't care a whole lot about, that's one big chunk of water reflection, deflection, but the ground around it has been removed. And now that it's being asked to be a duplex, I can't help but think that's going to be virtually entirely paved, which at the planning meeting of June 20th, Mr. Beckwith stated, no, we're never going to pave that. The next day, he changed to a duplex. So now, going to continue on the articles. Article 175, 128, stormwater plans. What are we going to do about the water? Now, specific to that issue, now we've got a fully impervious surface now covering the, what remained of that quarter-acre lot, or nearly quarter-acre lot. There's no place for him to send that water, except through gravity downhill. And to be specific, for those that had the ability to attend this afternoon, those that remember walking behind the church parking lot, any kind of a culvert to that gully, which is on the church side, to that area that's all heavy brush, that water is coming down a gully, to me. That's not acceptable. The regulations are here. Now, I know 175 is, as I understand it, zoning criteria articles. I mentioned 173-21 as stormwater regulations from planning. All the details of what should be done are there, and why they should be done are there.
Just, just, just to point out, that's not part of the appeal.
The part of the appeal here, in this case, was the land size, but I also want to get into what was or is required for a duplex. Because when this went from an ADU to a duplex, you don't get to pick and choose parts of what regulations you want to have and ignore the others.
No, but site plan doesn't apply, and what you're reading from is part of site plan.
Okay. All right.
Just for board clarification, he's allowed to say whatever he wants, but for board clarification, a duplex does not trigger site plan review.
Okay. Well, in the planning board, they asked for a site plan, and he has not presented one. I have the copy of the drawing of the original patio that was in the back, and the sketch of where a building would be, that was only, the only site plan involves a garage with upstairs storage. Now, specific to that point, I'm going to jump ahead, because the other articles are listed here, having to do with parking, having to do with stormwater regulation that are not being adhered to. There's no documentation to show what's going to be done with those items. Now, specific to today's activity, because it really illustrates my issue. First off, state statute 676:6, "Appeal." As I understand this, and again, I'm not an attorney, "An appeal of the issuance of any permit or certificate shall be deemed to suspend such permit or certificate, and no construction or alteration or changes of use shall continue until approved." The last week has been done at breakneck pace to prepare, there's no way, this was a coincidence, that he wasn't informed of this meeting, given the last week that he's been out there till 10 and 11 o'clock at night, burning it, filling in with topsoil and gravel. Landowners and abutters are here tonight to show you that, and to describe it specifically. Now, willful and misleading oversight by the planning department. There seems to be no regard for the neighborhood and the property owners abutting this situation. The planning department is misleading the landowners, whether willful, or I'm going to say just plain ignorance, the process that's already in place. By suggesting this be a duplex makes it easier, that puts new requirements in place that were not in place as an ADU. And some of them involve drainage and parking requirements. So I'd like to say that this all falls on the landowner, but no, I think it also falls on the planning department. Okay? Now, this permit was originally submitted as a garage with upstairs storage. No notification was ever given to anybody about it being amended to an ADU. There was no site visit, now maybe there wasn't supposed to be, but I'm looking at the spirit of where this is, leaving the neighbors in the dark. No adherence to outside existing ordinances. On paper, no notifications to abutters. Due to public testimony, Mr. Thurston stated, and this is from June 20th, "We don't have the tools to define whether or not there's a water problem here." Pointed to Tavis. "A site visit was brought up by the planning board member, Roger Murray." It's Tavis, this is required, Tavis, it is required. This was according to Roger, and it's in the minutes, you can read it. Okay? So this goes back, I don't want to repeat this, but this goes back to talking about how we ended up at a duplex without knowing about it. Okay? Now, today, because I wanted to make sure I had the right information, or the most current information. So I get up this morning. I went to the planning department. I want to see all the file for the Beckwith development. I got to see the original permit from October of last year for a garage with upstairs storage. There was no amendment to an ADU in a permit form, and maybe there doesn't have to be, but there wasn't. But I also looked for the plans that were submitted. There was a line drawing of a building, and in your packet here, you have the site plan. Now, I'm sorry, these aren't numbered, but it's toward the back. And it's a sketch of what was the existing patio and nothing else. No, you know, specific elevation information. Again, I apologize, it's kind of a poor copy. But what you have is no reference to where access from the church would be, let alone drawings that show where's a driveway to the back of this going to be. Now, when we were there this evening, walking around the outside, a comment was made, "That garage door, how are you ever going to get a car in there?" Good question. I don't know the answer. But what, what I'm more wondering is, what are you going to do with all the water that's going to get created from there? Now, there is one, two properties between me and that property, but it's ultimately going to get down to our place. Okay? So when I was gathering this information this afternoon, I got everything that was there. Then I asked a couple of questions. So I visited the building department to get updated plans, make sure I wasn't missing anything. There were no drainage plans, which the planning board had been asking for in more than two planning meetings. There were no parking or driveway plans being asked for as the drainage plans were asked for. I asked, there must be something, because he said he has them, he's done them. I was told, they're here somewhere. I don't know if they were misplaced, or if they exist. I have no idea. I asked, since these were, this was an open appeal, why is the work continuing at the pace it's at? I was told, we've been speaking to our attorney, and we really can't stop that, what's already underway. So Suzanne, I apologize, I'm sure you saw my expressions sitting there tonight. This is the mindset of what I've been wrestling with, trying to get information. Well, it's already been done, so what do you expect us to do? Turn around and undo it? Well, you know what? Yes, I do now, because the opportunity was presented to stop it, to correct it or redirect it, and it's been ignored. So yes, I do expect it to be undone. Now, lastly, this is unfortunate, but I am going to state this. I said, why didn't he just go for a duplex? Why all this reach-around garage, then an ADU, then, why? Why do all? And the response I got was, we all knew the end game was to get a duplex. I thought to myself, really? Really? I'm self-employed. I can't tell you how many man-hours I've spent coming up here instead of working, when this has been the, and I've been told, oh, you're a conspiracy theorist. It's not that way. Like, there's no way a guy that's been in the building business, his career, just kind of stumbling along through there. There's no way. Well, obviously, the strategy works, because if you stumble along and you get cooperation where maybe you shouldn't, well, it's already done, so what are you going to have us do? That's like the property below us. Well, it's already done. It was done by a previous builder many years ago, created a plateau that destroyed my mother's lower driveway for her beauty shop. Well, it was already done. What do you expect us to do? Fix it? So what you have in here is letters from people like Dave Ford that acknowledge these problems existed. They were ignored. They were not fixed. Some of the fixes that were represented didn't work. And it's because of bad building practices that are letting. And it's because of bad building practices that are let go. All we're saying is, and again, I'm going to say this again, I don't care about that building, it can be whatever it wants. There are ordinances in place to protect the abutting members. Don't make this something, and I've written it here, I thought, I'm going to think about this for a while, that this really represents it. Once again, an entire community is in an unnecessary turmoil because the planning department refuses to take ownership and enforce the existing ordinances and processes that are already in place. They're here for everybody, and should be enforced and supported universally for everybody, not the few. Now, I have gentlemen from the church, and I bring this up because I'm going to ask Richard to mention some of the challenges he's having with the parking, because it's not going away, it's getting worse. And the access from the top. So, it's just the water issue. It's an access of vehicles to that backyard. Okay? And as well, the Hartz are here to talk about what's happening with the soil next to them. Thank you for your time. I'm available at any time, night or day, by phone, email, in person, whatever you need for information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead. State your name, for the record, please.
I'm Richard Fraser. I'm on the council of First Christian Church. We've had little problems with Mr. Beckwith over the years, but basically, he uses this right-of-way to drive down and park a car behind the church on his land. And that was okay, we dealt with that. I haven't done any research, and I don't know what's out there, but that right-of-way was given long before our time. It was designed for horse and buggy, that's how old it is. And it was never designed for a vehicle, especially a driveway to an apartment. And, you know, it's a hassle with us, because if we have a funeral or a wedding from out of state, they're not aware of all that. And I've had many calls, "Somebody's parked in my right-of-way, and I would have to remove him." But it's, you know, it's a battle to maintain that right-of-way. And to maintain it as a working driveway 24 hours a day was not what it was designed for. So, that's in a nutshell. And I don't know what's in the books, or what's out there, in specifications or anything. It's just right beside the church. I've always considered it one parking space wide, it may be a little bit wider, I am not sure. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Marge Hart. I live at 20 Libby Street, Lot 14, and I have some pictures to share.
You give one to the secretary when you...
Speak a little louder.
You'll notice that the date of the first picture is September 1st. I started taking pictures, our slider, I work at home, faces the property. And I started noticing a lot of the work being done, and seeing that, you know, it was majorly disrupting the ground. And so, I just started documenting it, because I said, "Well, if we have drainage problems, I want to make sure that I've got this documented, because we need to protect ourselves." We have been dealing with drainage issues, because we have water in our basement. It's an old house. And we also had some serious drainage problems for our driveway last year. We invested in gutters for our house, and have those piped right into the sewerage system right on 20 Libby Street. We also invested in a retaining wall. We put $20,000 into the retaining wall. It was just recently completed, two weeks ago, where it was professionally done by Goose, and I can't remember the name of the lumber company. Goose Corner Lumber Landscaping. And he put in, you know, massive amount of rocks underneath, a nice large drain pipe, piped it out from underneath, and this is on the abutting land. And there was no retaining wall there before, so we really needed to do something to protect the driveway. So, we put drainage in, and they ran it underneath the driveway, because last year we had drainage issues where, you know, there was problems with icing on Libby Street and such, with drainage problems, with various water issues. So, that, we got all done. We had spoken with our neighbor about also providing a screen. And we offered to put in mature arborvitae trees on the property to screen, if you can see that we've been seeing this construction for a long time, and materials on the side of their yard. We purchased $2,500 worth of mature arborvitae trees, and offered to install them on the land to help with drainage, and also provide a visual barrier. The night before they were supposed to be installed, he said he did not want those installed. The only way we could do it was against the fence, or against the retaining wall, which would have killed the trees. So, we just stopped that. And now, are looking at purchasing fences, because again, we just want to, we've been looking at it for a long time, and would like to have some beauty in our yard. So, we received the letter, certified letter. On September 5th, it was stamped, and I saw on it that it was an appeal. So, I did research. Found that an appeal means that you're supposed to cease and desist the work. You can see on the second picture, the work continued. Excuse me. And what the second picture is just showing is, there is no drainage. There was no drainage put in underneath. There was about nine dump truckloads of fill brought in, and not really compacted. And so, I've, you know, got that all documented visually. Because when I saw the cease and desist, I'm like, "Hmm, what's going on here?" And then I actually listened to the planning board meetings of June 6th and June 14th.
Excuse me, could you tell me what the date is on this one? It just says Tuesday?
Yeah, Tuesday, and that's all my phone could do. The 6th, 5th, September 5th.
Oh, okay, thank you so much. Sorry to interrupt.
You're welcome. So, yeah, I just started listening to the planning board meetings to understand what was going on, and heard that it went from a garage with storage to an ADU. And I'm like, "Wow, this is moving fast and changing." So, that's why I'm here, to understand what is going on next door, because right now, I'm really not clear what is going on. I will say that I do agree with Derek that, as soon as I received that letter, that I did notice things going on, going much faster. The work was happening day or night, and like I said, I work at home, so I see all of this, hear the trucks backing up, the beeping going, and everything. It's all right there. One thing I'm curious about, I don't know if you can answer it today, but I'll just put the question out. We came before the zoning board in June of 2020, because we had a shed that we wanted to put at the end of the driveway. And we got approval for the one-foot setback, as opposed to a five-foot setback, which was great, we had the shed put in and everything, that was wonderful. If you'll notice in the pictures, there's some large 2x2x4 cement blocks that were put in for retaining wall. I don't know if that is also needing to be five feet off from a setback perspective. I don't know if that only applies to buildings, or, you know, structures such as a patio, et cetera. But that's just a question that I have, and I just would like to bring your attention to that. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Audrey Klein, North Main Street. I'm here representing Roger Kent, who is an abutter to the property. I don't, Roger, I don't believe has any issues with ADUs or duplexes. You know, I think we all recognize that Wolf Row needs more housing, and downtown is a good place for it. I think the issue here is that the process for getting those ADUs and duplexes and additional living spaces should follow the regulations, otherwise, it's not equitable. And it's not sustainable. And we can't provide a lot of those if we don't have a process that gets followed. So, what I've got here is some of the existing sections of the zoning ordinance, in an order that I hope will make sense. Some of them have already been identified, and I have a few other ones. So, the single-family duplex, as mentioned, a single-family duplex needs a half an acre, and this is only on point two, so there's a change to the number of units on a pre-existing non-conforming lot, and the allowance is being changed. So, I think that is an issue. Secondly, Section 175-129, issuance of permits. Yes?
Is this the same as the appeal you've already submitted on these same points?
It is. But I'm here in support of the appeal that you're making.
I know, the board should just be aware that we have received another appeal following these same very points. Just keep it in mind.
Correct. And the reason I'm going to move forward with that appeal, regardless of what happens with this appeal, is because should the person with the building permit appeal the decision of the board, if I don't have an appeal, I won't be able to appeal that appeal. So, I feel that regardless, I will be moving forward with my appeal. However, I wanted you all to have this information tonight, as you were listening to this appeal, because I am in support of this appeal. 175-129, issuance of permits. And this goes to the garage permit when it was issued, the ADU permit that was under consideration when it came to the planning board, and most certainly to this duplex permit. "No permit or certificate of occupancy shall be issued for the erection of a new building, the garage, the enlargement or increase of the floor area of an existing building, which would be the garage, the development of a use not located in a building, which would be the parking area and the patio, or the change from one type of use to another, which would be the single-family dwelling to the duplex, unless off-street parking spaces or loading bays are provided in accordance with this article." And with this article, they're talking about with zoning. That's what they mean when they say with this article. So, before, as the permits were to come in, the development of the parking area should have been identified, reviewed. That would look at drainage, that would look at impervious coverage, it would look at all those things that are addressed with that. That was not done in any of these building permits. The big change is from the single-family to the duplex. Because a duplex requires two parking spots per unit, not the one that the ADU would be required. You can put an ADU parking space with your other parking, because it's part of the single-family dwelling, but a duplex has to have its own two parking spaces. So, now, we've got a 200% increase in parking. So, the issuance of the permit should have recognized that there was a higher increase in parking, and it should have addressed the items such as storm drainage, such as access. And it didn't, none of them did. One of the interesting things about this street is this used to be in the RA zone until just a few, a handful of years ago, and it was put into the central business district. And in doing that, the uses on that street became much more, there were much more permitted uses. There's commercial uses that are now permitted on that street that weren't before. But the big change is that construction can cover the entire lot. 100% of that lot can be impervious. When it was in the RA zone, up to 40% could be impervious. So, there wasn't such a big need to review parking and drainage, because you could only cover a small area of the lot. Now, you can cover the whole lot. If you're going to have the benefit of being the central business district with the uses that you're allowed to put on that lot, you have to also take the responsibility of taking care of that lot. You can't have one and just say, "I don't need to do the other." 175-91K, conversion of a permitted use to another permitted use, and no change to the exterior of the building or parking is required. There is parking required, because it's going from a single-family dwelling to a duplex. The duplex requires two more additional parking spaces. I just want to point out that during the planning board hearing, there were some comments made about, "Well, this is an existing building, so it's just adding an ADU." But the existing building was never completed. The barn was, never got a certificate of occupancy. It was never reviewed for these site issues either. But it's not an existing building until it's done, and it has a final or a certificate of occupancy. This kind of just dribbled along from one building permit to the other, without ever being completed. So, calling it an existing building is, in my opinion, not quite correct. And I don't think it matters anyway, because it changed from a single-family to a duplex, which requires additional parking. 175-128C2, one of the things under this article that you're supposed to look at with development of a lot in the CBD, because you're covering 100%, or you may, is accelerated runoff of surface water from land covered by impervious materials. Due to the additional parking requirements determined by the change of use from single-family to duplex, this increased area has, the required area has increased by 200% at least. And it can include the entire lot, if somebody wants it to. They really need to deal with the runoff. But here's another item that doesn't speak to the outside. And that is, a duplex dwelling is defined as "a building and accessories thereto principally used, designed or adapted with two dwelling units of similar proportions." If you recall, an ADU can be no bigger than 750 square feet. And as this application went to the planning board as an ADU, it was 748 square feet. So, they made very sure to keep it small. Well, now, it does not meet the definition of a duplex. It's not similar proportions to the other unit. It's 748 square feet, and as far as I can tell by the tax card, the other living area on this lot is something like 2,400 square feet, three times the size. So, it can't be a duplex, because it doesn't meet the definition of a duplex. It can't be approved as a duplex, because it doesn't meet the definition of duplex. In reviewing the application, the building permit for a duplex, it clearly didn't. That could have been seen and adjusted, or told, or brought up, so that that's, you know, something that they had to deal with before we got here today. So, for all the reasons above, I ask the board to uphold the appeal and rescind or revoke the approval and issuance of the building permit. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wants to weigh in on the subject even more against...
Do you want a motion for continuance?
I think that's in order. And also, in the interim, we'll be contacting our council.
So moved.
Second.
Are you continuing to the 25th, or to the October meeting?
What's the earliest date we can have? What's the earliest date we can have a continuance?
Tomorrow.
25th.
We have September 25th already scheduled. We have Monday, September 25th already scheduled, it was supposed to be a work session.
As long as the motion is sticking to the 25th, that's fine.
Yes, September 25th. You second it?
Yes.
Since it looks like you're heading in the direction of...
Just before you...
Yeah.
Just a minute.
Yeah.
We got a motion to continue to the 25th. We got a motion to continue until the 25th, 7 o'clock here at the town hall. And I got a second from Sarah, the motion was made by Luke. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, okay, now you may go ahead.
Thank you. In the meantime, is the work to cease until this happens?
That's not up to the board, and I'm happy to meet with you after the meeting.
I can't understand... You'll have to take that up with... I couldn't understand what Tavis said. I could not understand what Tavis said.
The answer to the question is not the purview of the board, and I agreed to meet with Mr. Brown after the meeting, or at his leisure to discuss that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Vice Chair, I have a question. Are we able to submit questions to you, to go to Town Attorney? Yeah.
Yeah, I would suggest you try and get all comments to Suzanne by Friday, so she can get them out and have an answer by the 25th.
Okay, so, this hearing has been continued to the, what'd you say, 25th?
Yes, Monday, September 25th.
And we don't have to advertise it, because we have verbalized the date, time, and place. And at this juncture, I would turn the meeting over to Chairman Klein.
Now, I don't have my agenda in front of me.
Right here.
Thank you. Okay. Unfinished business. New business. Minutes?
The only question I have on unfinished business, and I don't want to pretend to go back into a case since you just sat back down again. Does the board want a reprint? Do you want to go into rules or procedure after this case on the 25th?
I'm confused by what we've got.
I think that this case is rather complicated, and I think that we need to put the rules of procedure out front of the day, is that what I heard you say?
Hey, I just didn't want to not, I didn't want to not get it to you if you were planning on doing it, so. If that's going to move, that's fine.
I would move to table the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any communications to tell us about?
I do have an application packet that'll be, it was submitted for the October deadline, and I'll get that out to board members ASAP.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.